Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 6th regular meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. Mr. Meeger, can you go through the roll call, please?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. David Gasson?
Here.
Richard Kenjuk?
Here.
Sarah King?
Here.
Eric Lord?
Here.
Matthew Stone?
Here.
Chairman McGee? Vice Chair Hauser? Mayor Bixson? And Councilmember Sage? Okay. Five present, we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
We have a quorum, great. Everyone stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Okay, so this evening, we have a somewhat packed public hearing scheduled. If you have a comment on one of the public hearing topics, please save it until that item is brought forward. Does anyone have a public comment they would like to speak to us about? That doesn't talk about a public hearing item. Don't all rush forward. Okay. So, we'll move on to item number four, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting on February the 6th. I hope everyone had a chance to review them. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear support?
Support.
Okay, excellent. Roll call, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, who had the motion? Mr. Kenjuk? Okay, and second was Mr. Lord? Okay. Member Kenjuk?
Yes.
Member Lord?
Yes.
Member Gasson?
Yes.
Member King?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate all five of you showing up. Everybody else is either sick or off on work. And we felt it important because we're starting to really get stacked up with agendas that we move things forward. This is for everybody in the audience and anybody that might be watching. If somebody feels that they would like their item table because they can read what's going on and they wish to or they request that the entire commission is here, they could literally ask for a tabling. This happens at the zoning board a lot. We were short-staffed for a while and we always tell petitioners, if something's not going right, or you feel there's a reason, we don't have to honor that, but we could if they can request it if they need to. So, I'm gonna do an order amount of explaining on this packet tonight. I apologize, it's kind of wonky. You see, we have different reports and I'll explain it all when we get to the items that have two reports and what happened and why that happened. So, the first one's pretty clean, though, other than it's the Central Business District and I think Jeff, go over that. I just want to read into the record, I got this late Friday night and I think it's important that. The Rochester, this is to do with the Central Business District, about businesses on Main Street. This is to me from Chrissy Drowell, Executive Director of Rochester DDA, support of ordinance amendment in CBD. At the February 28th DDA Board meeting, the DDA Board voted unanimously to support the proposed ordinance to amend Article 11 CBD, Central Business District Sections 1100, 1101, 1102, and 1103 of the zoning code of the City of Rochester to restrict some uses to upper, non-street level stories. The DDA believes that the change will greatly benefit our downtown businesses and allow us to continue to recruit and place businesses on Main Street that will attract foot traffic and new customers to our downtown district. We appreciate your consideration of the matter and your support of our downtown businesses development efforts. So, just for the record, they did take action on that. Jeff, you want to talk a little bit about the ordinance?
I can. And then the chair will open up for a public hearing. It's set for a public hearing tonight. So, procedurally, I'll just briefly touch on the ordinance amendment. And then the requested action would be to conduct the public hearing, which is set for tonight. And then if Planning Commission is satisfied, the action would be to move it for consideration to City Council. So, the ordinance amendment itself is the Sections 1100 and through 1103 of the zoning code, which is the Central Business District uses provision. I know you've heard this because we've talked about it and Nick has previously explained the genesis of it. The DDA is in support of it. This would be to restrict certain uses from the main, the properties fronting Main Street. It used to be, the first draft included, it was just those properties fronting Main Street. And then through different discussions, it was, at this body, it was narrowed down to between Second and Fourth Street, not the entire district.
University.
I'm sorry, university down, yeah. So, that, it would be essentially to prohibit on the street level, not completely removing from the district, but just from the street level, uses that don't typically have walk-in traffic. The concern that it's being tried to address is dark offices when nightlife is happening and vents are happening in that area. So, this would restrict those two. For instance, it wouldn't allow general offices and non-retail type uses and services uses. So, the ordinance, there's different sections because it talks about principal permitted uses. So, those are specifically excluded. You'll see a little asterisk is how we did that. Like, for instance, you'll see in 1101, Pren 5, it'll say offices are permitted in the district, but then it says see below for restrictions. And that's where we get the not permitted on the street level for properties fronting Main Street between Second and University. And then principal permitted uses is 1102, and it's the same thing, same restriction and same restriction with special exception uses. You'll see that same restriction filed throughout. So, it used to be a little bit more cumbersome. We, hopefully, the version that you have is simplified a bit to make it clear. And the, so the requested action again is to conduct the public hearing and to move it forward to City Council, the Planning Commission so wishes.
Mr. Drowell, just before the public hearing, get a little more information. So, we talked, there's four, one's marginal, so four or five at the most existing offices downtown that would be affected by this. So, talked to the owners, all but one, actually, one guy owns two. And they wanted to know, for instance, Artera Realty. So, they're presently in, I think, Poshco's building and that's a kind of real estate office would not be allowed on the first floor. In talking to the owner of the property, the fact that if they, if, when, in this case, Artera moves to Greens, then as long as a year doesn't pass, our ordinance is very clear about how non-conforming uses are extinguished. If they're not expanded, they're extinguished after non-use for one year. So, if they came in with another office use within that year, they would be grandfathered in and we would allow that to happen. Same with Daniel Cobb Bryant, Michigan Realty. There's a couple of them that would be affected. And it would be on them, then, to find a backfill office tenant to do that. So, that's just a little bit more background, so.
Fantastic. Ready to roll the public hearing? Okay, so, we are going to open up the public hearing for item 5A, discussion to amend Article 11 of the Central Business District Sections 1100, 1101, 1102, and 1103. Time is 7:08. Anyone out there have a public comment? Okay, we'll close. Oh, we have one. Good evening.
Good evening, Bob D. Tomaso, 426 University. I just wanted to say I support this. I go to other towns and, you know, you go down to have dinner or something and you walk block after block of, you know, dark windows, real estate offices, banks, stuff that's all closed down. And I think it hurts you downtown. It helps to have, you know, something that draws people in and gives them something to do. So, I like this idea and hopefully, it doesn't, you know, put anybody out who's a, you know, a property owner or something like that. But I think in the long run, it helps to preserve the town and the feel and what attracted people to be here in the first place, so.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, public hearing and public comment on that topic is closed now? Commissioners, any comments on item 5A? Yes, Mr. Gasson?
I don't know if it's to administration, but a question is in Section 1103, Special Exceptions, Item 7. The added item number C says rental units are not permitted on street levels. At first, I thought that was a little bit confusing about that as a whole, but then I looked at it a little deeper and wondered if the reason it's there is that front offices for overnight lodging could be on the first floor, but the actual living or lodging units couldn't be. Are you trying to be that specific about that? Or is it any component of overnight lodging can't be on the ground floor?
It would be any, any component. Right now, on the first floor, you can't have apartments, apartment uses. So, that's consistent. In fact, it's, the section right above it does not, upper story apartments are not, excuse me, only upper story apartments are permitted. So, when we went through to look at the overnight lodging, we just wanted to make it clear that that was, again, one of those uses that we didn't want to see on, in the storefronts, in the windows.
Just another question, Mr. Chairman. Okay, that brings to a different light to that question. I wasn't thinking of it as apartment or living units. I was thinking of it as rental overnight units. Is it meant to be like hotel-specific or is it really apartment? Because if it's apartment, if I change that word, owned unit versus rental unit, that might leave a crack in the door to say an own unit on the ground level would be permissible.
Yeah, so, yeah, so when I used apartments, that was an example because that's already prohibited. That's not captured by that. So, this would be other types of units that people sleep in.
Sleep in, so it's whether it's overnight or for permanent residence?
Correct. In fact, there's a, I think, believe that overnight lodging facility is a defined term in your zoning code. So, if it's helpful, I can find that, I believe, and let you know what that, what the code provides.
That'd probably be, if it clarifies it, that'd be great. Otherwise, it looks like there's a couple little twisty-turny things in there that might be interpreted differently by someone that wants to live on the ground floor.
Okay, so, in Section 3905, it does have a definition for overnight lodging facilities. Means commercial establishments, including hotels, motels, inns, and the like, which provide lodging meals and other guest services. So, I guess if you're trying to distinguish it from my owned condominium, for instance, I guess that would not, well, would that be permitted in CBD anyway?
Kind of on the second floor.
So, the "our" use really is taken care of because of the apartment term?
That's correct. And it's not a permitted principal use in that specifically permitted?
Right. I think apartment takes care of that, the word apartment. So, back to my first question, which is the premise is if it's an overnight lodging hotel sort of thing, the front desk can't be on the ground floor?
Well, that would probably be in a retail service, I guess.
So, I would say that's ancillary use to that permitted use, which would be the motel office on the second floor. So, I would say you could not do that because it would be an office, pure office, that section, so.
I would agree. I wonder if the wording is clear enough for someone that tries to, or wants to propose something like that. Just food for thought, maybe the wording is proper, but maybe there could be some added language. Rental units or any ancillary support space not allowed on first floor, something like that?
We could certainly add that in and present it to City Council, for sure. That's good.
That doesn't hurt.
Any other comments? Okay. So, do we have a, oh, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, any of these motions tonight, all five have to vote yes or it doesn't go, so. This is a recommendation, right? This is a public hearing, make a recommendation to City Council for the ordinance amendment, correct?
So, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, move forward this change to Section 11 with the added comment taken care of on 1103.
Support.
Based on administration interpretation.
Support.
Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Member Gasson?
Yes.
Member Lord?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Stone?
Yes.
Member King?
Yes.
And Member Kenjuk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Next item up for public hearing is item 5B, lighting provision draft ordinance for consideration of ordinance.
If I may, before you is the same ordinance amendment to Section 2306. You last considered this at the February 6th meeting and Planning Commission considered it and moved and set the public hearing without change, the presented ordinance. Once Planning Commission conducts the public hearing, the next step in the process would be to forward the matter to City Council for consideration. And if any Planning Commission members wish to make comments for, against, neutral, they could certainly do that and put those in the record. So, the public here, excuse me, the requested action would be to conduct the public hearing just like the last ordinance.
Any other comment?
Okay.
So, we'll open this up for public hearing at 7:17 PM. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Pat Kane, 17, West Fourth Street, Rochester. I apologize for laryngitis, but we were about power for nine, four days. Didn't even have it back a week and got sucked into it this last weekend. It's my understanding that this is a recommendation to send to City Council with support or without, but to come back to City Council. Am I correct?
You are correct.
So, I know that not, the support is not here. And I sent a bunch of information, more photos to be put up tonight, but I don't think it's going to change anything. I think Chairman McGee has been very explicit, there's no support. And the conversation that was public, or rather, on cable, is Secretary Hauser asked that somebody from planning speak against it at City Council. So, I think really, I'm here tonight to satisfy a requirement, a process for the last three years that has now accumulated in going to City Council. If you want, you can see the more photographs and I can tell you, they, most of them are within a week old. But really, truthfully, all the ordinances I've presented, all the educational I have presented, all of the statements that debunk all the stuff I've heard here that was not factual. Having a discriminatory ordinance on the books that protects some residents and not the rest is not the way to go. The light pollution, causing an annoyance and a nuisance for someone, foisting the expenses on a person and another household because of someone's physical light trespass. Light trespass is now called physical trespass as well because it's energy and it is matter. I finally find all that out. So, really, I'm looking for your recommendation. Let's just not waste time today. Let's just get it to City Council and we'll take it from there. Because I think I've exhausted myself with everything and how many hundreds of pictures and emails? And if you want to see the photos again from a week ago, you're welcome to. They're all through my house. And I should not be denied a quality of life or the use of my property because of excessive lights that are not shielded. And these are not shielded, they're not directed to the property and it can be easily, easily done. All I've heard here is cost, but nobody has yet to talk about the cost to the person who has to suffer that. Nobody's talked about the quality of life. We are a monarch, mayor monarch. We are pollinators, can't have them in my front yard or gardens. Light won't allow for that. Can't have any of that. So, I'm just looking for you, just let's go ahead and get it shifted over and we'll take it up over there. And like you said, you have a schedule tonight and quite frankly, I think we don't have to put the photos up, do we, or anything? So, please, just take your vote and let's just move it. Look at it this way, it's off your plates. Besides, McGee's not here, Hauser's not here, Mayor Bixson's not here, Steve Sage is not here. And had I known nobody would have been here, I probably would have asked for it to be tabled because it probably then would have been a very robust discussion. But I thank you. So, after about three years, you may not see me here except on other matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have the desire to make public comment? Okay, public hearing for item 5B closed. Commissioners, any comments?
I just want to ask a clarifying question of the way that this ordinance is drafted, the change. So, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. It's exterior lights that exceed 100 watts or LED equivalent of that, spotlights and floodlights are required to be shielded and directed away from residential lots, but not other lights. So, if it's a regular light fixture, like, what are they called? Like those carriage lights that are glass and it has less than 100 watt bulb, it doesn't have to be shielded?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was the 100 watt or LED equivalent was, as you recall, was a lot, a large part of that discussion at the last meeting. And so, rather than trying to, I guess, create what that would be, Planning Commission decided to bring it back as is. With the, I think the assumption is to move it to City Council to arm wrestle if they wanted that, that matter changed. But yes, you're correct. If there was, for instance, a 40 watt bulb, that wouldn't be, that would not fall under that, that provision or that requirement to have shielding.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Gasson?
Okay, a couple comments. Back maybe to the definitions, not to really split hairs, but I think I need to here. And it really kind of follows on the comments of light type, really pointing out spotlight and floodlights. So, the very first A, exterior lights, and then it says exceeds wattage. So, lights are typically the fixture itself, not the lamp. So, the definition kind of conflicts itself in its statement. So, it should be exterior lamps. And I would say specifically exterior spotlight or floodlight type lamps exceeding that on single-family residents to the end. So, that would be saying, kind of what you were saying is it's a lamp type, so it's a flood or spotlight type lamp, the physical thing you screw in. The fixture itself is irrelevant because you could put the floodlight into almost any type of fixture, even a interior house lamp. So, you're, we're in that first statement saying you can't use this type of lamp, meaning light bulb, unless you direct it away from your neighbor or shield it. Which I would say, yes, we should have that sort of requirement, not to have a spotlight or floodlight lamp pointed somewhere besides your own property. So, I would change that wording and leave item A. And then down in item C, any light fixtures, again, same thing, split hairs on the definition, would be any lamp, meaning the light bulb itself, that do not conform to, again, this would be item A, 100 watts or LED equivalent. And in the very end of that, I would end the sentence at, again, I'm on item C, 30 days of notice from the city, period, and not have that the fixture is in violation of the ordinance. I think that simplifies and clarifies it. And what I'm trying to say in this whole dialogue here is that the lamp itself, spot or flood must not point towards your neighbor or be shielded. I guess that's it, really. You can't have that kind of lamp at exceeding that wattage or equivalent pointed anywhere else but your own property. I know I went around in circles there, but hopefully, it made sense.
No, it, yeah, if Planning Commission wishes instead of exterior lights, because I know that there's, early on, there was question of, well, what if a fixture has three bulbs? And we said, well, you'd add it together. So, I think the actual meaning was the fixture itself.
The fixture being the physical thing you screw the bulb into.
Correct.
So, it could have three sockets.
Correct. So, if Planning Commission wishes to have that instead of a, on a fixture basis, but on a light bulb basis, we can, we can change that. We can, or to make that change. That's just, that's up to Planning Commission how you wish it to move forward. That doesn't?
I think what I was trying to point out is that in this language, we conflict what we're trying to say by using the word fixture when we mean lamp. We should use the word lamp if that's where our ordinance defines it. In industry and in planning, lamp means the physical thing you screw in. Fixtures, the thing you screw it into. That's my understanding. If I'm not right, based on our definition, then I stand corrected.
Well, no, it's wherever you want it, however you want it to read. The issue, I think, is maybe if there's a light fixture, I mean, in that purposefully, has three lamps that are 75 watts each, that would be compliant with the code, even though it's giving off three times the 75 watts. So, that's the only downside, I think, if we, if we change it to exterior lamps.
Maybe we use a combination of exterior lamps that exceed 100 watts or LED equivalent of 100 watts. Maybe exterior, a combination of exterior flood or spot lamps. So, we're defining it right there in the very beginning. It's a combination of those two types of lamps that exceed that wattage.
Okay, so, the way it's structured now, it's, there's three different things that would require shielding. Spotlights, floodlights, and lights that are in excess, or 100 watts or more. So, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, you're putting the 100 watt language as to only spotlights and floodlights, not the carriage light that Commissioner Stone, excuse me, sorry, King mentioned.
That is what I was saying. If collectively, the group thought that previously, and I wasn't at that meeting, where they narrowed it down to spotlight or floodlight, that's where I was trying to keep the conversation. So, exterior spot or floodlight combined cannot exceed 100 watts.
So, you would be specifically excluding discussion of a carriage light?
I am, but not purposefully. I am because I'm trying to stay within the confines of what this is crafted as, based on previous conversation.
Okay, so, really, the changes you're suggesting are the 100 watts regardless of light type? Whether it's a carriage light, whether it's a spotlight or a floodlight?
Well, backing up, my personal preference is yes. But I was trying to stay within what we have put here, which is spot or flood. I would say any kind of light shouldn't exceed 100.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
But I think that's going against maybe what was collectively put forward previously when I wasn't here. But that doesn't really mean anything. Today, I'm saying that technically, we got some complications here in language and that's what I was first trying to address was lamps versus lights, so we don't trip ourselves.
Maybe if I could suggest this is, and if there's not a consensus on changing it, perhaps I can address the offered suggestion in my memo when it goes to City Council, saying there was discussion on this and some Planning Commission wished it to be 100 watt max regardless of type. Is that fair?
Well, I think, if you don't mind, like, I think the spotlights and floodlights... Like, I think the spotlights and floodlights generally tend to have a larger wattage lamp, correct? So I think putting the qualifier on other exterior lights was needed to identify those that are very bright. Whereas spotlights on their own would already be required to be shielded and shielded from other residential lights, or other residential lots.
If I may, I'll tag into what you just said. Further in that item A, it says directed away. Maybe in the very first part of that sentence, we use the word directional lighting versus spot or flood. It's, most light bulbs are just everywhere, but spot and floods are directional. Maybe we use that as the descriptor. Exterior directional lights in combination or cannot, in combination cannot exceed 100 watts or equivalent.
So excluding a carriage light, which wouldn't be directional?
Unless the lamp itself is directional in a carriage light, which you could do that. The carriage light is the fixture, right? It's the character or image of the way that, maybe I'm saying something you know, but the carriage light is the fixture.
Correct.
Which could have a standard round bulb or a flood or spot bulb put in it.
Okay.
The direction of the flood or spot would be down in a carriage light. So I think the exterior directional light in combination, cannot in combination exceed 100 watts, kind of says that we're trying to protect neighboring properties from a direction light regardless of what fixture it is in. I don't know if that makes sense, but in my head, it makes sense.
It does.
If I may. I think if we're going to focus on wattage, that's a mistake. In the 12 examples that Ms. Kane provided to us, not one of them referenced wattage. They all referenced lumens or Kelvin. That's a measurement of the color. You could have 100 watt light that is soft light, daylight, and half a dozen other characteristics. And the yellow light is a very soft light that might be totally acceptable to some people. But if you're going to present 100 watt daylight, that's going to be very bright. So I think focusing on wattage is a mistake. The proper measurement is Kelvin. And then beyond that, you know, I was under the impression that today we're simply going to recommend to council whether we support this or not. If we're going to talk about changes or exceptions, I have several problems with this proposed ordinance the way it's written. So I don't know if we want to go that far into it.
Can you state that in your memo?
Certainly.
So you can do what you want to do. I think the consensus of the group was to move it to city council. So, and I don't want to speak...
No, let me, yeah, and you talking to the chairman, I think this came, it's like, this isn't the final answer, no matter what. If we're going to just not accept, like, just get it on, let city council deal with this because we've tried it for three years, we've said no to anything, we've tried to fix it, and you can't fix all of it. Basically, what she's asking for is you can't see a light, you want to have to have a shield on it other than underneath it. And many planning commissioners sat here and said, impossible. Everybody in town is going to have to take every light and put some foil or something in the front to block it. That's the intent, is to not be able to see the light source. You can't write anything to do that, other than say, don't see the light source from anywhere other than underneath it. You can't fix this ordinance. It's either you're going to say dark skies or not. So if you, we could keep going through this for years. And to be fair to Pat, just get it, let the, this is more a political thing, to be honest with you. It's turned into that because many people have said, residents including, Pat's got her side to it, Ms. Kane does, and others have said, that means every light has to be shielded in the whole city. Stat doesn't support that, obviously. No one up here said that before, but I understand the concept. A lot of those ordinances were built on dark sky. You're right, you can go to Kelvin, you can go to lumens, you can go to, we can keep trying this, and it's not fair to her to not get it to the people that are going to finally make a decision, which would be the city council. So my, our recommendation is, you can recommend it this way or just deny it, say, we recommend not accepting this ordinance and passing it on to city council to fight through the ordinance with more information. It's kicking the can down the line, but to be fair to her, it's been three years and we're just stuck here.
Yes, ma'am.
I would be supportive of recommending it as written. What I would not be supportive of is shielding all carriage lights. That is the one thing that I think, if that's the restriction.
And in Pat's case, it's not anything other than a carriage light with a 40 watt bulb that's bothering her. So this doesn't solve her problem.
Yes.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with what Nick said in terms of we can't solve the problem as you described it. I didn't think this was trying to do that. I thought this was trying to take a situation where someone could intentionally take a bulb and be obnoxious with it. And this solves that. If someone's doing something that's ridiculously not nice, this takes care of that. And that, I would be for that in this case, but to say we want to have zero light in any situation, it's not practical, and I don't think it's safe, and I don't think it's really the right thing to do. But I think if we reworded some of this, it could be a good ordinance to take care of the intentional, I'm going to mess with my neighbor kind of light, because you can. This takes it away from that situation. I don't think we have that, but I think this would guard that.
And I do agree with that. If somebody was doing that, but we, then you get into the ordinance with Chief's been talking about, how do you get to a nuisance? What's a nuisance? Where you define it at 100 watt or more? That's, that's mean, just somebody being mean. So updates, next door, I have an igloo in my backyard. I have the little white T-lights that run on there. I turn them off at 10 o'clock at night. My neighbor put one up and, but had running race lights in there and left it on all night. People, right next to people next door's bedroom. So they called, fire department said, I can't sleep, it's running race lights. Turns out, it's because with the power's out, it set their timer off, so it's going all night. We called them and politely said, can you turn those off when you're not using them? And the neighbor agreed and did that. So most of the time, Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we can get compliance with this, but in Pat's case, it's not, it's not too bright, it's not, it's just an irritant because you can see it from her house and it lights up inside her house. So again, the only way to correct that is directly shield it because it doesn't break any of the existing ordinances. We've checked foot candles at the property line, wattages, guy's good. It's just an irritant because she can see it from inside her house. So again, if we don't fix that, I don't know what, we're not helping her at all.
I have one more comment, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, belaboring a couple of thoughts here, but this one I was going to save to miscellaneous, but based on the conversation, I'll bring it up. As part of, and I'm going to go a long way to get to my point, the ZBA takes issues of variance that somehow you want to do something that doesn't fit neatly within the ordinance. And usually it's because of a hardship of something. And the idea I thought of, this is somewhat like that, but in reverse, meaning Ms. Kane's situation. I was thinking, what if there were such a thing as a reverse variance? So all are compliant, but someone is burdened by compliance. As compared to a normal variance, hey, I want to do something different than the ordinance says, and I might be a burden to somebody else in the process, but I, there's a mechanism for me to get that variance. In this reverse case, there isn't anything in our ordinance that says, hey, I could bring forward an issue that bothers me that doesn't fit within the ordinance. So I don't have a complaint mechanism. But here is a situation that has some uniqueness to it. To, the corner lot has a backyard or garage that's somewhat not necessarily normal, but it presents to the front of this house. So I'm just throwing out for thought, and I was going to do this in miscellaneous, say, is there a way for us to introduce a new process, call it reverse variance, to deal with unique situations that don't fit in ordinance, whether it's compliant or not compliant? This would be one of those things that doesn't get worked out neighborly and, not that neighbors aren't being neighbors, but there isn't a way to say, hey, you have to do this, unless there's a unique situation. And I think maybe this isn't so obvious, but it made me think a little bit out of the box. And I think a reverse variance crafted could apply, whether it's here or in some other, you know, obscure situation. It might be something in our, the city toolbox to help residents or businesses deal with situations that aren't normal. And whether we call Ms. Kane's situation not normal, it sounds like the garage faces the front of the house. That's not normal. It's, it's something we, we should maybe consider. I don't know how you do it. I didn't put a lot of thought into it, but it struck me as we deal with that, where property owners want a variance out of ordinance that subtly impact others around them. This is the opposite. Someone's doing something compliant, but it's subtly impacting someone else. Why, why can't we deal with it somehow?
Interesting theory. I get what you're saying.
I don't want to spoil the action, I'm just going to throw it out there.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for the thoughts. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Lord?
I just have one. If we are going to send this forward to council, item 4B, I would recommend that we add, after will be resident complaint initiated, after I would say by the affected property owner. So that it's not just any resident walking around with a complaint.
Yeah.
We're worried about somebody just going nuts on us and saying, I'm picking everybody in force.
Yeah, because like you said, if, I mean, there are so many that don't comply today, but if it's not bothering anybody, which doesn't sound like it has for, forever, so let's not open it up to just anybody who feels like complaining.
Good comment. Any others?
Well, if we're going to start making some suggestions, I have two more. 4C, it's limited currently, they must make a change within 30 days. That may be a little ambitious because you may have to hire an electrician, and nowadays it's quite difficult to get a trade to come in on a timely basis. So I would suggest we extend that to perhaps 60 days. And then under section five, we may want to add an additional exception, that being security lights. Number of people, if you walk towards their house and you cross a motion sensor, it's going to turn on the lights, and those are typically going to be bright spotlights. However, they should also have a timer where they shut off in, I'm not sure how they're set up, but five or 10 or 15 minutes. In fact, situations like those were referenced several times in the documents that Ms. Kane provided us.
And that actually was in version 3 CEQ, back in the day. It was, you know, we had, if it had, any motion lights had to have a cutoff and some, we had one version that it could only be triggered by things on the property, you know, to eliminate the cars driving by every time, and it is on. So that, that concept is not new for this ordinance. So it can either be added as a comment or a suggestion when it goes there. We're getting a lot of good comments. I just am trying to figure out what, what is your intent? Is your intent to push this as is with a listing of possible comments and changes from individual planning commission members? Or are there any that you want to see in it before it goes up? That's, I think that's where Nick and I are going to need a little...
If I may make a suggestion. Based upon what the intent was coming into this meeting, me personally, I do not support this ordinance as written with several reasons. Maybe we should state those reasons and leave it at that, leave it up to council to decide.
I think that was the intent. If there's pros or cons that people wanted city council to know, and I don't want to put that term, but it was, that's what this process is for. So you are, you are not moving to approve the ordinance, you are moving to, move it to city council with comment. If that, I think that helps frame what you're talking about.
Yes. Because I'll even add one more I just caught. In this document, it also says that it would become effective within six months. Based again, the documentation Ms. Kane provided, this would be the most aggressive, and I would also call punitive, ordinance out of everything that's been presented. Most of the others that talk about timeframes have a two-year phase in, a three-year phase in, a 15-year phase in. So, you know, to tell us that everybody in the city has to, you know, accommodate this ordinance with six months is unenforceable.
If I may, just recall that this is, this is not a, an ordinance that would require everyone to change their lights. It is just a, if someone is complaining and the light is, that's, that's where we get the city, excuse me, the resident complaint initiated. Code enforcement is not going to go around and say...
Understood.
Oh, just, just want to make sure.
But it says that under 2306, 3B3, this becomes effective six months from the date of approval.
Oh, that, that's not applicable to this. That, that's in a, that's in a different... Those, those ordinances are already in place.
Okay.
So what we're talking about now doesn't have that six month.
Okay.
So Attorney Kret, you're going to watch the replay of this to pick up all of our comments and suggestions for council?
I believe that what will happen is my, my notes that I've taken will be included in my memo. And also the minutes of this meeting are going to be, which will capture your comments.
And if I may, we could take the minutes of every time this was discussed and put them in their packet, because we did talk about a lot of other things about, at one point, we thought trigger lights, when they trigger them, turn them off after 30 seconds. On my street, I can stand on my porch and somebody's seven, I don't know how they do this, but Seven Houses Down, Trixon, comes off in one minute. I don't know how that picks me up on my porch, but I can go out there and go like this on my porch and trigger Seven House Down, which is really weird. So we struggled with that and thought, Chief C was saying, just don't make it so I can't enforce it. That's the key, and it's the Steve Zook rule, don't write something you can't enforce. So if we're going to deal with it, let's deal with this, we have the teeth to actually make it make sense. It would help immensely if it said only the resident affected. Now, in my case, it could be Seven Houses Down, which starts opening up, but it's not, somebody driving around because they're mad and going, every single light is a problem. That's, that we, that we could never deal with. So what, the suggestion you made, Eric, could narrow the scope down a little bit. And we can, again, outline all that in every single conversation we've had, we can put that in their packet, so they know this was a deep discussion for years, so they're educated. I think they know, quite frankly, people have been watching this and so, but we will make sure they get all, everything Pat's ever sent us, we'll get that to council also. To be fair, so everybody's got everything before they, so they're going to have to do their homework before they talk about this.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
So we're looking for a motion.
A motion to move it to city council.
With the recommendation or just simply motion to move?
Motion to move is sufficient. With, because they're going to have the comments from you, from this meeting and other meetings.
To make a motion to move the city council as written with two modifications, 30 days to 60 days, changing that, and adding the resident affected. I would also add the comment that I personally, I don't know if everybody would be supportive, but that it does not get modified to say all exterior lighting must be shielded. I would be opposed to that.
So just to be clear, actually, instead of just moving it, you're moving these words with those modifications, so.
With multiple comments in a memo.
And, and the rest of the comments, sir, also? Are they, are they the comments? What you just said, get added to the comments? Yes, okay, that's what I thought. Because if we modify this, then we have to modify the document to say those three things versus we'll make sure those three things are in the comments and it just goes as is and move on.
So I, I think what I heard, Commissioner King, she wants to move it with two physical changes.
Two changes.
The 30 to 60 days and by the affected property owner. And included in the comments to city council is that council member King, or I'll probably leave it more general, but a council member specifically said, I don't want this to be applicable to all exterior lights.
The shielding.
The shielding. That, that's how I interpret that you added your, your comment to that.
Do we have support?
Point of clarification of...
Yes, sir.
Attorney Kret, does that, what you...
Um, Attorney Kret, does that, what you just said at the end, is it, is that making language into the ordinance?
Ju, no.
That's just my comment going-
I, I interpret what she said as only two physical changes. The, "I would not be in support of all exterior lights having to be shielded," as just comment.
Conversation of the time.
Correct.
If I can make a friendly amendment to correct the language in terms of definition, lamp and fixture, uh, if that, if that's gonna get too complicated, if, if we're modifying it, we should technically correct it.
If, if that's-
Or you can take that as a comment as part of the conversation. If it's gonna be that way, I wouldn't be in favor of sending it to council.
That's, that's-
I'd say we correct nothing.
Then that's what I think.
And, 'cause-
All comments.
'Cause it'll look like we're thinking it's okay. I'd, I'd rather not send it with any amendment other than the comments, 'cause it looks like then we've, you know, charred it and are done with it. And I don't want that to be the perception, 'cause there's obviously a lot of questions.
Sure. So Commissioner King, so then it would just, those comments you made would be put into the comments, but not touch this document, 'cause we do then, if we had said something would, if one votes no, this doesn't go forward anyway, so. So it would be no change, no comment, I'm sorry, all comments, no changes, even the sixty days or ordinance, 'cause I agree, that makes it sound like then you're okay with it, so.
Yeah. If I can add on, Mr. Chairman, if that memo, that you're gonna, you're gonna do however you normally would do it, but I would enumerate it, one, two, three, four, five, here are the main things, thirty days, the no shielding, um, yeah.
That's a complaint, yep.
So it looks like strongly here are ten items, or however many it is, that we debated.
Correct.
There you go.
Yeah, that, that, that's-
Let them insert it.
Correct. I, that, that's exactly how my memo would look.
Be okay with that, I'm sorry.
That's, I can work for that. I'll revise my recommendation. I recommend moving this to city council with our comments attached.
Very good.
Do we hear support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Who got the support, I'm sorry?
Mr. Lord.
Okay, Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenji?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, item five C, uh, public hearing for four-two-nine South Main Street. A site plan request for exterior modifications to both the front and rear facades, a special exemption for use, use for consideration for payment in lieu of parking. This is the, uh, location formerly known as Greens Art Supply.
So, Mr. Chairman, so Vidya, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, this, Chairman, um, McGee called me and, and was upset, and I, I understood why. He felt like we were airing our dirty laundry in this packet, because we have Vidya's normal report, and then Patrick and I wrote comments against that report, which we never do. So, we talked to Vidya, I talked to Dennis, and, and we understand why, what went on. So for years, and mostly previous to this sitting planning commission, it was drilled into our city planner, Vidya Krishnan's head, "Don't bring stuff to this board if you have comments on you that you can't rectify on a drawing." She took that literally and has presented every report that she's ever done to say, "You'll see, at the bottom of her recommendation, this is not ready to go to be scheduled yet, to be heard, because there's outstanding issues." What ran it, for, I'm gonna just speak for me before Patrick was even here. So what I run into all the time is the developer saying, "I get it, she's not wrong, but I don't agree. And unless I agree, I can't go on the agenda." And that's very, especially on facade changes, because Vidya's right, the ordinance says, "If you're gonna submit something that changed the outside of the building, you have to do a site plan, that might turn into a survey, that might turn into this, that might turn into Vidya saying, 'I don't like the, the, the elevation doesn't match, in my opinion, what's downtown.'" It, it's not very defensible for us with the developer to not say, "At least let the planning commission make those decisions." So, we try our hardest to, Vidya does a report, we give it to the developer, we bring him in and say, "Look, all these things she's saying are legit, but in the, we're gonna have it three times tonight." There's, the developer said, "I don't necessarily agree with what she's saying, but let me tell my story to the planning commission." So, to be fair to the, so I asked to have Greens and to have Downtown Inn put on public hearings tonight, so that petitioners can explain the comments that Vidya's had. Patrick made an attempt to, or attempted to address that we actually met and talked about those comments after Vidya's report. In fact, Vidya, you even hosted, uh, I think for, was it Greens or, oh, no, Sir Brown Iron. We had them go out and meet, so physically they can meet and try to work these things out. Sometimes we're not gonna be able to work them out. And even Dennis said, he doesn't wanna put Vidya in the spot of saying, "I can't recommend it coming to this board, because I have outstanding issues. Let the developer explain their issues." We're not saying we support them or deny it, but at least get them here. So that's why there's two reports in here tonight. So if Vidya read her straight report on these next two, it's gonna say, "Don't bring them here." We met-
Nick.
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead, Vidya.
If, if I may just add, thank, thank you for that introduction and clarification. I do want to clarify one thing. Years ago, the planning commission had made a determination that applicants need to meet certain minimums before appearing before the planning commission, so you don't have a laundry list of things that are left unresolved. That does not mean that as the city's planning consultant, I'm obstructing a project from going forward, because that's what it sounds to me like is being stated here. I have never let my opinions or recommendations as a planner deter a project from being before the planning commission. If I make a recommendation on architecture and the applicant disagrees with it, that is perfectly fine. I would still make a recommendation for them to be before the planning commission for consideration. The point at which I will not make a recommendation for them to be before the planning commission is when they do not submit a site plan that meets the basic requirements of the ordinance, when they bypass the process that we have followed. The two projects that are before the planning commission tonight, both the Greens and the Downtown Inn, they are following a process that was not afforded to several other projects on Main Street in the last few years. So my role as a planner is to make sure that the process is followed consistently each and every single time. I have absolutely no problem with the applicant disagreeing with the recommendation, and in fact, I bought several projects before the planning commission where the applicant doesn't necessarily agree with my recommendation on architecture, and the planning commission has sometimes agreed with my interpretation and sometimes said, "No, we agree with what the developer is proposing, and that is perfectly fine." But in tonight's case, the first case, I don't want to jump ahead, but the first case is for a facade renewal, and there are no elevations in the packet. To review a project for facade modification with no elevations is simply not a complete application. And in case of the second one, the response is that there, this is an existing site with a lot of non-conformities. I believe Mr. Gasson has raised enough number of times at the planning commission that existing non-conformities need to be eliminated to the extent feasible, wherever it's possible. We wouldn't ask for a building to be shifted, but if the parking lot or the handicap space is non-conforming, it must be brought into compliance. The ADA code does not say it's non-conforming and it can remain non-conforming in perpetuity. So for the next two cases, I will defer to you and Patrick to present it, but my reservation is not to hold these two projects back. I think it is great that existing sites are being reoccupied and improved by these owners, and I really commend them for it. My hesitation, why I will not recommend them proceeding yet, is because they are not following the correct process that was required of every other applicant. So I will rest over there, and I will let you and, uh, Patrick run with the next two cases, because, um, my recommendation at this time is for them to submit additional information, and they are not ready for planning commission action.
Right, and, and I respect that, and again, because Vidya's not here all the time, in the packet there were elevations. She didn't get them, and so we held the guy up for three months, because she said she didn't get them. On, and on the, um, Downtown Inn, it's a, and I, again, she's correct with how Mr. Gasson interprets this, he's not touching anything. It's painting the building, and we don't want him to redo his whole parking lot. Some cases, in, in our opinion, and I can't, I can't professionally tell Vidya to back down, and I don't care if there's a site plan for Spartan Inn, 'cause he's not touching anything. The building code would say, "Fix the handicap spot," and if he wants to move the driveway in the front, that's different, then you get a site plan. But it's just level of, how, how much can we demand on, we're treating every site the same, and they're not all the same, that's my whole point. And again, Vidya never puts something down that isn't legit, it's just, at some point, it's too much, and we can't move them forward. It's basically only on facades. We've run into it a few times, and, and again, on, in the case of Greens, I will say that Patrick and I were a little frustrated with the developer, because it was, I'm just, I'm not touching the building, I can't make it look historic. I went to the historic commission, nothing's different on this building. It's, there was borders in the upper part of the old windows. But then he came in and said, "Well, I wanna take the back four parking spaces out and make it a patio." Okay, well now, that is, needs a site plan. Not, now you are doing something to the outside of the building, so we had to slow him down, say, "Get us a site plan, so we can look at that." So again, these are unusual cases, and normally we would try to work with Vidya, so we don't do this at all. So, in this case, on both these cases, I would want the developer to come up first, explain to you what he's doing. Um, Vidya, do, can you pull up the site plans and the packets actually, though, as we go through them?
Absolutely. I'll get the first one up on the screen.
So let's go to the first one, maybe we'll work our way through this. And I apologize and told Dennis, I don't like this either, and we love Vidya, and everything Vidya does is so professional, but we got snagged on these two, and they were very similar, so. Um, so, I, when I'm, I'm not gonna do a Vidya report, 'cause I didn't write it and Patrick didn't write it. We're just, I want the developer to come up, explain what he's doing, and then the only difference to this building from a facade change is that back area, that right now, you, you'll see in your packet, it was pavement. And actually, um, former Mayor Dalton has said, ah, she doesn't like the fact, and so, by him taking out, it gets so confusing. So it's, we want green space, we don't like pavement. The back of this building is just asphalt. He's taking it out, and he can explain it. Um, Chairman McGee doesn't like the wall around the property, because he's afraid of sightlines, understood that, but the, the difference is, we want green space back there. He has to pay in lieu, not because of taking out four spaces on property. He's paying in lieu five spaces, because in my computer, I told you, we have everybody's grandfathered in, thank you, Vidya, for that, we're grandfathered in that you have so many spaces assigned to you, because you don't have any parking. In this case, when you change from retail on the first floor, storage on the second floor, that's what Greens was, that was thirty-four spaces. Now he's going office, I'm sorry, that was twenty-nine spaces required. Office to office, he needs an extra five. So instead of, you can't create them, so he had to ask for a pay in lieu of, and, and former Mayor Dalton, who owns Shamrock next door, geez, I objected to that, I don't, I don't want him to be able to pay in lieu, which would mean he can't have this use. What she was me, I think what she meant was that, because that area's gonna be an outside dining area, I'm sorry, an outside gathering area, the dumpsters are right across the street. He's aware of that. If he wants to have an outside patio that's green versus the cement, that's on him, not anybody else saying, "You can't have that," right? We want green in the back. We tried to soften up the alleys, but she didn't like it, because that area right there is across from the dumpsters, and make sure that nobody should have to sit outside dumpsters there in the back. So, again, not our call, that's the property owner's call. Um, am I making any sense at all here? It's, it's, it's a little frustrating, it's tough for us, but, sir.
Um, I have a quick question. I, this says that it is, um, a site plan for, uh, front and rear facades.
Correct.
We don't have any, uh, drawings on the facades, the front, and there is construction being done on the front, so I just-
No, there, there's, in your packet are pictures of everything.
It's not in my packet.
There are no facade elevations in the packet, Nick. I haven't seen proposed facades.
I reviewed facades.
I don't know how-
It wasn't included in ours, or mine, I don't know.
I just wanna point that out, 'cause I, I, I felt like this was incomplete from that.
Same reaction.
Okay, well, not strong, because I've, we've looked at every single facade he's done it fifteen times in the building, so why aren't they in the packet? I, I understand the frustration. Patrick, what, what was in the packet?
I've not seen the facades either, Nick. The applicant originally submitted, uh, Juliet balconies and all that, but in the second submission, they said they were not going to be building that facade. So there was no new facade submitted with this submission. So I honestly don't know what the building is going to look like.
Well, I feel stupid, 'cause I've seen them fifteen times already.
We, we have facades and floor plans?
Yeah, we have everything, and I, I assume they'll be in here. Ah, okay, Vidya, you don't have it with you, do you?
Um, no, well, we did not, uh, bring it, but we did, uh, we did submit-
Can you step up to the microphone, Captain?
Explain it, yeah, explain the process to them.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name is Vito Terracchino, and we're the owner and developer of Greens. And, uh, initially, we did have some Juliet balconies on the front, we decided to remove those, we did redo the exteriors, submitted them to the city, and basically, we're restoring the building to look like it originally was even more so. Stripping all the limestone, cleaning it off, instead of having it painted over. Uh, and we're just really replacing all the dilapidated windows with, uh, brand-new windows. And the only reason we're moving that front entrance over, the only reason we're moving it over is because it's not ADA compliant, and that certain area has a big steel beam that comes across that metal section there, right through that front door underneath, with the big, huge concrete wall slab. And to chop that whole thing down, I mean, structurally, that would have been a big challenge. So that's the only reason we moved that door all the way to the, uh, north. And in the back, what we wanted to do, uh, because it's going to be a co-work space, um, that back area, when people take a break and have something to eat, we're changing the garage door as well with glass doors. We're gonna put a green space out there with, uh, like a little hedge going around, and then green turf out there, so you really won't see the dumpsters. So it's just really an area for people just to hang out. And plus, that whole back area, I don't know if you guys have ever drove back there, because we're next door to Artera, people always try to park there, it caused, caused a lot of chaos in that back alley, and they shouldn't really even be parking over there, so.
Okay, that's all right. So I'm gonna fix, and I apologize, 'cause I, I was told differently. So, we're gonna ask you to open the public hearing, postpone it until the next meeting. If we can get it on the march, the second meeting in March, we will. You can't not have seen all this. I, I did not know they were in there, I'm sorry. When I opened this, I assumed all of their, so, I apologize. Um, so that's, we don't need to talk anymore about this, because if, obviously, we want Vidya to see the elevations, and you all have obviously seen before we would take action on them, so.
Can I ask a question before we go to the public hearing? So, this is a former retail use that is now proposed to be an office use?
At this point, until the new ordinance kicks in, we can't stop it.
But from a timing standpoint, if now we're gonna, 'cause, 'cause we just moved that other ordinance up, what's the steps before that gets adopted?
So what happens now is it goes to city council. City council looks at it, if they, if they're ready to move forward, then they would set it for another public hearing, and then, eh, then they have to go first reading, and then second reading. So those are two different meetings, 'cause you can do public hearing and first reading at one, and then the second reading at the other. And then, once it gets published, then it's, since it's a zoning ordinance, it go, it's effective seven days after that yet. So we're talking two months.
Okay, so we're not gonna rub, rub in, uh-
No, so what I would suggest is that we're having our second meeting in March, just to talk about zoning amendments and stuff, but we could put this on there. You'll get the packet tomorrow with the elevations, we'll get it to Vidya, so she can look at that, and then we will, so this opens the public, we just table it, so we'll have another public hearing, and don't, but we don't have to advertise it and worry about the days in between on the, that second meeting in March in a couple of weeks. That's the third Thursday, I think, right? Is, is that okay?
And Nick, I, I would also like to clarify that the applicant submitted a formal application to the city before action is taken on the new ordinance amendment. So they are good, even if this takes time in getting approval, we cannot retroactively apply the ordinance to them. This project can proceed, because their application was formally submitted before the new ordinance will go into place. So they're not going to be impacted by it.
Thank you for that.
So, uh, no public hearing tonight for this?
So open the public hearing, and then have somebody to table it till the next regular meeting.
Okay. So, uh, we'll open the public hearing for item five C, four-two-nine South Main Street.
I propose that we table it to the next-
Well, hang on, you have to close it, then you do that.
Right. Does anyone have public comment? Okay. Thank you. Closed for this evening. Commissioner King?
I propose that we table this to the next planning commission meeting, uh, until we have a full package with the, um, facade drawings and elevations.
I would agree. Support? Okay, we hear support. Roll call, please.
Okay, we hear support, low call, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, who, a second? I got, Commissioner King?
Motion, Gassen, support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Gassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
And Commissioner Acting Chairman Stone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, 5B on tonight's agenda, the Downtown Inn, 1100 North Main Street, site plan requests for exterior modifications to both exterior elevations. Again, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. So, again, we met, Mr. Peter Collage, the owner of the apartment, now Downtown Inn is here presently, he, we gave him Vidya's report, and again, couldn't have come to an agreement on them, so there was a few items that, Patrick and I met with Peter, he's, he's already painted the building, there's not much we're stopping him from doing, because you don't need permits or planning commission approval to paint the building. It was some of the exterior improvements in the front that we would get things that we wanted on here. So, in your packet, there was review comments that were from one through ten, in the dark, every single one has an exclamation of how we met with him after Vidya's report. Again, I'm going to have Peter come up, explain what he's doing overall, and then we can look through these comments to see what was not able to get off the list. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Peter, you want to come up, explain who you are. Thanks for running that video.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peter Collage, I own the Downtown Inn. I owned the hotel for about a year and a half, so far, doing a good job, cleaning the place up. Now, what I'm looking, I talked to Nick, talked to Patrick a few times, I got the blueprint, I don't know if you guys seen it, the new facade, what we're doing, the new elevations, did you guys seen it?
Yeah.
So, all I'm asking over here tonight, the building gets old, obviously, and we're just trying to renovate it, trying to give it a little face left, make it look good, which is the neighbors are going to appreciate that, I'm assuming, the city is going to appreciate that. I'm just a little to spend my own money out of my own pocket to make the place look good. I don't think it's going to increase my business by doing that, where I think something needs to be done, the building is old, and I'm thinking it's really necessary to bring it to the standard. I think the city deserved it, the people over here in Rochester, they deserved it. I bought it, and I promised them I want to fix it. And this is the reason I'm here tonight, I'm hoping of all of you to take it to the next level, and renovate this building. We're not adding anything, we're only working on existing. It's not much into it, obviously you guys see, I don't know if you guys see the pictures before and after, I think the designer did a good job designing it. My opinion is it's going to look good, so I'm here to get this thing up and moving.
Thank you, we appreciate your efforts to modernize this building.
All right, so the snag here was even deeper on this one. So, Peter's stubborn, right, I'll call him stubborn, we sat down and went over Vidya's report with him, and most of the stuff's not wrong, but nitpicky, like, show all the buildings with a hundred feet, it's like, "I'm not touching the building, I have to pay a surveyor to do that, I don't want to do that. I'm not touching the parking lot, why do I have to show this and this and this?" So, he pushed back hard at us, and we said, "Well, you can't get on the commission if you don't rectify some of these," like Vidya said, "the minimum site plan requirements." In the end, these comments, and Patrick's are in dark writing below each one, nothing changes the plans in any of these comments, there's a, we argued over the dumpster enclosure, where to put it, and how to update that, but...
We agree with that, and we got to do that.
Right. But, if you had the time to read through these, it's, nothing substantially changes what's going on out there. So we could just say, we deny, just, we're going to deny your site plan approval request, and everything stays the way it is. He paints it, doesn't do anything other than make sure code's not up his butt for striping the lot, making sure it all works, and we're done. If we want to push him to anything further, that's all these other things in here, then that's his decision whether he wants to do them or not. We approve him with all the conditions that Vidya put on there, then, if he doesn't do them, then he's not in compliance with site plan, so. I hate these, it's just been a tough negotiation.
Well, Nick, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, like we said, we have back and forth, back and forth like ten times, we already talked about it, so, we came to the conclusion we got to do so much. Obviously, I'm doing the dumpster, I'm doing the fence, obviously, those, those are two major things, we're doing the parking lot, we're doing the striping, we're doing the handicap spots, we're doing all that, so I don't know what else needs to be done, an old building.
Vidya?
So, if I may offer some input, planning commission, the intent of the review letter was not to be nitpicky at all. When I asked for structures around a hundred feet, I wasn't talking about to the north or south, this property bought a single-family residential to the east, so the hope was, we would have an idea of how close the home is. The applicant doesn't want to show that, okay, some of the recommendations I made is, Mr. Collage is definitely improving the property, I never disagreed with it, but he's constructing a new dumpster enclosure and providing chain link gate with vinyl slats. Chain link with vinyl slats is not exactly upscale in any community, let alone Rochester, so my suggestion was that it's more industrial in style, why not go for a commercial-style vinyl gate? I didn't receive any response, I have no problem if an applicant says, "This is the reason why we chose chain link with vinyl slats," because, for whatever reason, but when I don't receive a response, I don't know what to make of it. There was a request for, you know, the landscape plan included boxwood and daylilies, now typically those are used as hedge. On a building with a two-story height, maybe adding a couple of trees and more ornamental landscaping would enhance the limestone and facade improvements that Mr. Collage is proposing. So, I don't see what is so objectionable about those requirements, these are not things that are intended to make the project difficult. I asked for the property line to be defined around Terry Lane, and the reason, I understand this is an existing site, but the reason I asked for that is, this is a non-conforming site, but I cannot make out if the parking is actually overhanging the public right-of-way, or is it exactly at the public right-of-way? The hope was, if we see where exactly the property line lies, maybe a crosswalk can be striped on the existing sidewalk, the entire concrete expanse along Terry Lane, so that if somebody is walking on a stroller, I'll go to the site plan so you can actually see what I'm talking about. So, if somebody is walking, if you look over here, it says this is the property line, I cannot make out if this is the right-of-way line or the property line. So, if this concrete sidewalk continues, and the actual property line is over here, my suggestion would have been, maybe we can just drop a crosswalk, so if somebody from the neighborhood is in a stroller and they are walking across, a crosswalk actually provides them with an idea of where it would be safe to walk behind. The intention was not to ask for a whole bunch of unnecessary information to make applicants like difficult, it was intended to help make small improvements to the site that would benefit the properties around it, and also Mr. Collage, so nobody suddenly, like, you know, goes walking around here thinking this is private property, and brings themselves out onto the road. So, I had, the only issue on which I had hoped the planning commission would provide input is the applicant's architecture. Yes, the color palette proposed is gray and black, it is a beautiful color palette, my only concern was, you have Rochester Holistic Arts to the south, and Morgan Stanley to the north, both of which are traditional red brick buildings. So I wanted the planning commission's input if the proposed architectural facade in gray and black is suitable for this area or not, because this was the exact topic that was discussed across the street for the Detroit, the DFCU Credit Union, I remember there was extensive discussion on that project, whether it blends in in the area where it is proposed. This is without doubt, the improvements being made are making this a much nicer-looking building. Question is, are the improvements perfect for the buildings between which it is located? And so, I defer to the planning commission for that input. So, I'm happy whichever way the planning commission wants to proceed on this. It's on here tonight for public hearing, if you want to make a decision on it tonight, or if you want to make suggestions, recommendations to the applicant for clarifications, either way the planning commission wants to go, I'm happy to support the planning commission and Nick, whichever way they want to move this project forward.
No, and I appreciate that, and here, this is a perfect example with the site plan Vidya just said, if you go out in the field, it doesn't matter where the property line is, you can't put a cross-drape walk in the back end of parking spaces until people walk behind the cars right up on them, so you wouldn't do that. By putting the comment on there, it makes it think like, "We didn't think of that." So, that's my frustration, is you would never put a sidewalk there, it's, it doesn't matter whether, it's been back, that's illegal parking, you're backing out into the right-of-way, and you've done that for sixty, a hundred years, however long this has been here, so we can't fix that, so, again, frustrating for both sides, like, what do you want me to do? If I put a walkway there, I can't, you can't back across the walkway, because you're telling people to walk there, you got to cross the street and go on the Morgan Stanley side to walk across the street. So, again, things that we can work out from now on, by visiting the site together with Vidya, and we make sure that we're on the same page before we ever come forward.
I mean, guys, all I'm asking you, that site has been there forever, since sixties, obviously you cannot do anything with that sidewalk, you got cars parked in there, I don't know what to do, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, it's been there forever, which, there's another way doing it, there's no way other way doing it. And obviously, everything is explainable over there, the dumpster, like she said, I mean, this is a commercial grade, I mean, we're looking to spend fifteen to twenty thousand dollars that dumpster over there, we're looking to spend another ten thousand on the fence in the back, so, I mean, I thought I did everything that it needs to be done. I just don't understand, honestly, I just don't understand.
And the dumpster became a big point of, probably, later in this meeting, we're going to actually give the planning commission the right, because Vidya's right, it says "masonry product." We're going to ask, we have a million of them around town that aren't masonry, they're, Ra-Ras got gates and slats in them, because they're all non-conforming, so, we're going to give the planning commission the right, when they review dumpster enclosures, to work with the developer to come up with an alternate look, it could be wooden slats, it's not offensive, but it's offensive half the time now, these block ones, that they don't paint, or they're just block walls with posts on them, so, sometimes the, the ones with slat stuff are okay, so, again, that's something we can get through.
Well, again, let me jump in, the dumpster design over there, Nick, that's a center block, it's all blocks, it's not wood. I don't know what the idea is with all the wood, that's center block, everything in there. Only the thing is the gate, gate can be changed to anything, you guys, aluminum, I mean, you can put vinyl, anything.
Yeah.
All around, it's a center block.
Okay, then you, then you would meet the ordinance requirement, so maybe Vidya didn't see the change that you've done.
It's on there, I don't know, how can we miss it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
Any further comment?
So, up to you guys now, trying to do my best.
Thank you, Mr. Collage.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to open up here at 8:23 PM for public comment. Anyone have anything to say, please come up. Okay, we'll close with public comment. Commissioners, any comments on the applicant? Commissioner Gassen?
Just a couple, in general, I would, only majority of the commentary we started off with here is, if an application isn't in compliance in terms of basic elements required for submittal, it's something I don't feel comfortable approving or making final comments on, that's just a general comment. Some of the things that were talked about, the only thing I would say is, I don't see property lines, and a couple of their nuances like that, but the basic improvements we're looking at, and we're looking at this for facade upgrade reasons, right? And then that kind of spilled over into a couple site issues, and that's really where I focus my attention, and I think that's where our purview is, not so much everything else, but it gets into the conversation, but I don't think you can deny, there are site improvements here, so it's a site plan review, whether it's where you draw the line on that, and what's existing paving, existing parking, I'll just draw your attention to the site plan relative to the aerial photograph, the parking is different. So to me, the parking has now been adjusted, it's designating handicap parking in the front, kind of the unload zone, I think it has an appropriate path away from there without going in to the street, I'm not clear that you can get onto the covered walkway from either one of those, that would be something I would like to see, at a minimum, indicate that there's a sign, there's an HC, but that's not traditional graphics for those. Those would be basic things I would say in any site plan, not that this one's been called out as being deficient. Those are my comments. The other thing, more to the architecture part, I'll say the brick is called out at the dumpster enclosure, since everything else is being painted based on the facade drawing, I would assume that's being painted, it's just not noted so. I would ask the applicant to concur that that is the intent, that it harmonizes with the rest of the facade improvements that are being done.
Any other comments?
I guess I do want feedback on both of those, the handicap, take it to the full extent for parking, and then the painting on the dumpster.
Definitely, definitely, I'm willing to work for it, and only if it happens.
Awesome. So, so we could, if we wanted to approve this site plan submitted with, we would go back to Vidya and say, if there's any outstanding items that clearly need to be on this plan, we will say, "That's your conditional approval." If you don't do them, because I want her to be able to sign off on a document, then it's not, then it's not approved. And Peter, I don't think there's anything they're saying that's going to bother you, to be honest with you.
No.
You're right, because we got the dumpster done, we can identify the handicap accessibility, plant material, I can work with you on that to make sure we get, she's right, if we can get some elevation to it, that, that won't be an issue, so, I don't think there's anything other than, if, not comments, just any conditions that would make sense to finalize this plan, to be treated like everybody else, we can approve it with those conditions, as, based in her report, and I don't think there's anything here that's going to stop you from doing what you are. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Lord?
General comment, you know, I think developers are given an ordinance for what they need to provide for a site plan, they're, in that ordinance, or separately perhaps in a checklist, is information, you have to provide all these things on a site plan, which is great when you're doing a brand-new site, you know, and you need to meet all the letter of the law, surveys and all kinds of things, but there does come that point where I think the city needs some discretion to be able to talk to the applicant and say, "Okay, if you're, if you're only doing this, we really don't need these, these couple of things," like, perhaps a survey, depending on what the situation is. My point is, is I don't think that every applicant needs to hit every letter of the law of what the checklist requires. There are circumstances that personally, I think, is just not needed and overkill, it doesn't really provide any value, but it does create a cost. That said, you know, the fact that this is primarily a facade improvement, and are we, are we re-striping the parking lot, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
So...
And our plan is to resurface the whole parking lot too later on.
Yeah. So I, there's a, there comes a point in time when I, I have a hard time just saying, "Well, it's just a facade, so everything else that doesn't work is just going to still not work."
We don't like that either.
Right? And one example of that is the parking on the north side of the building, I think, Patrick, I think in your comments, you had the drive aisle is only like thirteen feet wide from, from the, kind of parallel parking there to the...
He's got the parallel parking across the north property line.
Right.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, so like from, from those stalls that are head-in on the south side, up, like that drive aisle right there, I think I scaled it at like fifteen or sixteen feet. In one way, that works.
See, the parking is going to be facing only the west side.
That, that work, that conforms, right there?
Is there, Peter, is there parking along that wall parallel today?
It is, it's an existing.
So, this is, that's an existing condition, you, we could say, if you want that driveway wider, eliminate the top, now you're deficient.
I'm not necessarily saying that.
No, I, I'm only bringing up the point that, if that was, if there's a real issue with potential for people backing up into cars, and there's just not enough room for it, there comes a point in time when, you know, not everything is just a wall, it's just a facade. No, no, you should fix it then, right? Right? So, so I guess I just ask.
So, so I guess I just ask if that's conforming or, or not, or if we think that's a problem.
If it's fifteen feet from the back of the space, if it's a one-way, it would conform. If it's not one-way, it would not conform.
Okay.
Yeah, it is one-way, and it's more than fifteen feet. And it's not break, why you fix it? I mean, it's, it's not broken, why you fix it? It's been there for sixty years. I mean, nobody has any problem moving back into anybody.
If there would have been a dimension there, we knew it was one-way, then we would say it's okay, it would meet ordinance. But I, I don't see that there. I, I get why she couldn't ascertain that. So we could fix that by putting the dimensions on the drawing, and we don't have to change anything in the field. So that, so it would meet ordinance, one-way, fifteen feet, we're good.
Yeah, as long as it's one-way. I didn't, I don't know if it's one-way.
I'm not seeing it either, but it is.
It is, yeah. I assure you guys, we're sure it's one-way. It's only going from east, from south to north, behind the building.
Okay. You know, and just some other minor things, you know, there was a comment here about the site plan needs to include the parking calculations based on the, you know, and I realize it's, it's a facade, but we're, I mean, I think, that's not a hard ask to put that on there. So there's a couple of things where, you know, I, I see comments saying like, well, it doesn't really matter, doesn't really matter. And for me personally, there's a, I, I'm in agreement with, with that for some things, but then there's some things where it's like, just, it's not that hard. Just do it. Because it relates to parking, and is there enough, is there adequate parking out here or not? So that's...
And Nick, I'm sorry, but I thought we did include that, and we, we count all the space out in there, and we put everything in the drawing.
Vidya, can you blow that? There's nowhere on there, there's a chart. What's in the middle of the, of the thing? Does it say?
There are no parking calculations on it. There's just a notation of how much parking there is on the site, and which is why I asked. I wanted to see if the site is non-conforming, that is fine. But by how many parking spaces is it non-conforming? There is no way for me to know because there are no calculations out here.
That's fair. You're right.
Vidya, scroll up.
Avil, Avil, how many new guys?
There's a note right there, yeah.
That's just a parking count. It's not parking calculations. This is telling me how much is there, but not how much is required.
All right, so what we can do is a better job of when we give our comments back to the developer, we'll write on there, put this in there, and then if they don't, that's on them. So she's not wrong.
Again, it's not, for me, it's not a deal killer. I just, I'm giving you sort of my overall thought on some of this. And I think some of these are just not hard to hit, you know. And the other thing is regarding the fence in the back there. What, I see that we're gonna repair the, are you replacing the fence?
We're gonna replace the whole thing, all the vinyl.
So I would have appreciated knowing that because I had no way of knowing. The note here says repair existing wood fence. If I were told it's going to be a new vinyl fence, that's great. But I don't know that, and I cannot make that assumption.
Any other comments?
So if you'd like, what we could do is, I heard everything you said. We'll come back, clean it up one more time, change the drawing, bring it back. Same thing, open the public hearing, postpone it till the seventeenth. If Peter wants to change the drawings, if he doesn't, then he's stuck with the building that he's got. So nothing that's being asked is unreasonable. It's cleaning up the drawing at this point. Because he's done a lot of work getting that drawing there. It's dimensions, it's a few things.
Nick, it's easy to figure out how many parking spaces are over there. I'm telling you guys, I did everything, everything that's on there. Just look it up. There's new fence, new vinyl, new everything. I mean, we did everything we can. I mean, I just don't understand.
But evidently, there's bad communication because it's not on the drawing for Vidya to see. So she can't react to it if she can't see it. So I'm not sure how that broke down. But again, I don't review these plans personally, so. And this has been going on so long, Patrick wasn't even here. So this is back to Siana and everybody. So obviously, we've cleaned up our process. This won't happen again. So I would suspect if you wanna open again, postpone, we'll get a cleaner drawing with these comments. I'm sure I can work this out with Peter. And then we'll come back at the next meeting and ask for a clean plan that Vidya could write a clean report from, put on.
Unless anyone's comfortable to approve as noted, right?
Right. And say all the conditions that the planner needs. You could say that if you want.
So we're looking for a motion to move this until the March seventeenth meeting with added dimensions and cleanup notes.
Yeah, or approve it with, clean it up and add dimensions before she signs it. But it's just easy to get it cleaned up, I think.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
To board.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
All right, so Peter, we'll get you a list of the things that need to go on the drawing. Hopefully, you'll do it.
I'm not happy, but what can I say now?
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Okay. That is it for the public hearings portion of our meeting. We're under the considerations, item six A, Brown Iron Restaurant or Brewery on two-six-five East Second Street to set site plan for public hearing in April. Mr. Manager?
Go ahead, Vidya.
Yes. So I just wanted to provide an update. The Brown Iron Brew House is going to be a new bar come restaurant that is going to come at the corner of East Second Street and Water Street. This is an existing site with a building on it, and the applicant has been great in working with the city. I have had an opportunity to meet with them and with Patrick, and most of the issues are resolved. A couple of things the applicant was stuck on because of their property line discrepancy with Oakland S S N. So the project was not held up on the city's end. It was because the applicant is trying to resolve property boundary line issues with the county. There is some discrepancy in their title work that shows what they own versus what the county says they own. So there are very minor issues that still need to be fixed, which I think can easily be discussed with the applicant. So I believe you can actually move forward like Nick recommends to schedule this for a public hearing at your next meeting, and it will come back with a full site plan review before you at that time.
Our next meeting being March the seventeenth?
Nope, April.
Or the next regular?
No, the April meetings.
And then we would just ask Patty's here tonight. Patty has a run the owner, that she could give us a preview of what it is, and then we could take action that way.
Okay. Would the potential applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, members of the board. I am Patricia Eisenbren. I own, this is my third property that I'll be owning in Rochester. I used to own two-three-four South Main, which was the old D T E building, and did a lot of improvements on that, and then sold it and bought a boat. And then I currently own three hundred East Street, and then this will be the third property that I'm looking to, to own. Brown Iron Brew House, just to give you a little idea about us, we are family owned. It's my husband, myself, and I have a chef partner, Denny Smoljanowski. We were open in two thousand and fifteen. We've been named best craft beer bar in the state now in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. The Brewers Association stopped that after COVID. I was named, this year I received the award from Rick Snyder for Entrepreneur of the Year. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Small Business Association of Michigan. In two thousand and seventeen, Brown Iron was named one of the top fifty companies in the state, by the state of Michigan. I currently employ a hundred and thirty employees. I have a location in Washington Township and one in Royal Oak at thirteen and Woodward. And so the, the goal of this, I've been trying for about five years to get a property in Rochester that suited my needs. Something that had industrial potential as well as small restaurant operation. And when I say small, because the other restaurants that I own suit about three hundred, this restaurant would be less than a hundred. So to me, that's small. And this property came up, and I thought that it was like the most perfect spot for us because I feel like, you know, this area of Rochester is kind of like the new frontier for Rochester as far as development. And, and then if it matters, I currently sit on the PSD board as well.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, so we've talked about the new frontier. So it's part of the reason I'm excited to stay here as the city manager for a while is all this cool stuff going on. So what's going on now is the Downtown Development Authority authorized, AKA, I think, architects to start the building or the planning and the construction drawings for the front porch project Town Square, which is on the Farmers Market Lot, which we're gonna turn that into a year-round Farmers Market, basically with a front porch element that will look like a house embedded into a hill. And we have the, the talks when we had, when I would interview the La Pumas and the Cruises and all that stuff, we will make that our functional space socially. So it's got shed roofs in the back with swings that come down, turf on the, or the parking lot. There will be no more parking yet. On, on Farmers Market, it's not year-round, but on Farmers Market weekends, the trucks can still pull up and do our traditional Farmers Market there. There's grand entrances coming off of Third Street. There's handicap accessibility to get to the property. We're putting an amphitheater on one side of the hill next to the, the front porch section. And it's a space that we can use and program instead of shutting down downtown all the time. So we need a place that we can gather. Someone say, well, that seems a little bit off of downtown. Re-Walt has come in, and they're looking for the next phase of a three-story building on the gravel parking lot. Just met with them and Mike Plez, who is from Rochester Mills. They're teaming up, and they're going to build a three-story building. It's a distillery, restaurant, office, banquet room on the top on that property. And a lot of green space and, and public space tying it in behind Re-Walt's building to the gazebo that gets back to the mills and to the Royal Park. If Patty does this site, then she's the book-in from the fire station, where we use that as our community center, as you know. And she has, and we'll go over this when Vidya does her report next time. There's outside dining like she has in Washington. And this energizes this area. There's public parking to the north, because this site's been deficient of parking. She would pay in lieu of, for a few parking spaces, things like that. So this area is alive. We've got so much going on. East Street, people are looking at consolidating properties to, where the, the elevator site's being built. So Mosheri came in last week with their official drawings to put a live-work, three-story buildings on University and Water and back along Sunrise Property. That's all energized, and they saved a portion of the elevator with public space there. All this is starting to tie together. So we've got a war room in the back that we're gonna sit down and, or we're sitting down and looking at all the traffic flows. And what's gonna happen on the Mosheri property that he hasn't built on yet, that he's rethinking now at Elizabeth and Second? How's that tie in? What's Suave gonna do across the street on the big thirteen acres? How does this all tie in? And like what Patty said, the new frontier, I remember standing out here probably in two thousand and eleven with James Betrino, and he saw the parking lot, the gravel lot that's there now by the mills, and said, this is gonna be your next area that you do stuff in. Watch. It's all starting to come together now. So this is an important piece for us. It's the veterinarian clinic. They just needed more space. So this is, when Patty talked about industrial, she'll have a, a small brewing operation in here, yet the small restaurant, so it's, it's got some energy to it. But yet she'll accomplish her goal of being able to brew in here. She said zone industrial. And you can, but under special exception, we can do other ancillary uses in industrial districts. So she's just asking for that as a use of rights. So we don't wanna change the character of the building, et cetera. It's the functionality of it. So when Vidya gets her report, you'll see that we're down to a couple little items, like to look at where the smoker goes outside and where the dumpster is located. And that's partly because we're trying to figure out, Patty's been very patient with the Oakland County records because what the broker and what we've approved in the past for that building has a legal description to it. Yet when you go to Oakland County, it's half, the bank owns half of their parking lot, and they don't even own anything to the right side of that building. So she's working with the broker to get them to straighten that out on their end. We've already approved two site plans in the past. David, you were probably on the Plan Commission when we did these with that exact property lines. But yet the county's saying, you don't own all that property. It's not her problem, it's the broker's problem to figure that out. So, but we've, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm just kind of updating you on this. So the animals, or the Oakland Animal Hospital, they're the owners of the property. And when they purchased it, the title company did clear title on everything that we, in our heart, believe is the property line. So that title company approved it. Somewhere in translation, it didn't get taken care of at Oakland County, is what we believe. So we were supposed to close on this property in December, then January. Then we have more extensions because really the seller needs to clear up the title. So I've had a boundary survey done and certified that these are the property lines, but it's, it's the title company that has to really certify that. So we're just waiting with their attorney to certify that the boundary line is what we believe, and that what had been approved in the past are those boundary, boundary lines.
And that's a video to talk about. We didn't delay this, we've been working with Patty and, and her husband too. When can we come forward that you're comfortable with this is gonna get worked out, the title company? So we thought we'll get this scheduled for public hearing. They should have it worked out by April. Vidya, do a normal report on this. We just have a few little things to work out, and we'll be able to move forward as normal. So we would look to hammer.
Nick?
Yep, go ahead, Vidya.
I just want one item on which, on this project, which I would like the Planning Commission's insight so that when I do a report, I would have a clean report for this project. This is an existing site, like I mentioned. We do have an existing dumpster that is located on the east side of the property. It is within the front yard, and it is along Water Street. The applicant is trying to improve it by constructing an enclosure around it and providing gates for it to make it look better. But this dumpster enclosure will still require access. The turn movements will still require all access of Water Street only. So when a trash truck is accessing it, it's going to go this way. It's going to reverse back onto Water Street and then go this way. There isn't much room on the site to really place it anywhere else unless we try to move it over here. But doing that will mean loss of a parking space. And for a restaurant and brew house, every parking space counts because they need all the parking they can get. So I just want feedback from the Planning Commission if you are okay with retaining this existing non-conformity as it stays at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may?
Yes.
I, I drove by the area yesterday, and, you know, putting up a gate or something should probably take care of what's needed. I know that within the ordinance, you know, we would like a business to, to, you know, make the enclosure similar to the building. It already is. It has the same brick, the same colors. So it would be an expen, you know, it would be a tremendous expense to move it to the other place when it's ninety percent there, you know. So putting a, a gate in front of it, I think will take care of it. The other thing is where it's located, there is a bit of a hill. So I don't know if there's much you can do with that specific piece of property unless you put another parking spot there, which it's like six of one, half dozen of the other. If it, in this case, it's not broken, you know, we don't need to fix it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and also with us doing the Farmers Market Lot top, we don't want, we want the garbage as far away as possible. It's been there forever, and, and we're glad Vidya brought it up. And we're not worried about the turning movements. But it also, Patty, inside your functionality, there's a door to get out, to come to that dumpster instead of taking it all the way around the building, right?
It, it is. I mean, that location is, so when we considered where the dumpster was, and, and we took a lot of care in Vidya's comments, but where the dumpster is currently, it doesn't impede on having like, you know, right now, you're not smelling a dumpster in the winter. But when you put a dumpster up in that upper corner at the Farmers Market, it's gonna stink. I mean, we have, currently, we get trash pickup three times a week. And so, you know, and it'll be the same thing for this location. So, you know, it's not like garbage is sitting there, but, you know, so really, the dumpster where it is right now, I'll be exiting the back of the building and going around and putting it into the dumpster, which is further for us. and putting it into dumpster, which is further for us. But, you know, I would pref, just, you know, I, I would just prefer to leave it where it is and not put the dumpster, um, in the corner by the Farmer's Market.
Understood.
And, and I think we're okay with that and Vidya just wanted input, yep.
Correct. And I think Patty is overall making a definite improvement to this corner because this landscape island is being created, the sidewalk is being extended and a crosswalk put in. So basically this corner is being improved significantly over what currently exists. So if the planning commission finds that adding of gates will keep this as a reasonable location for the dumpster currently, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to run it by you first.
Makes sense to me. Awesome. So we would like a motion to set a public hearing for the April meeting.
Okay. Anyone have a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Support.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next item up, uh, that's six B dumpster enclosure ordinance.
So speaking of dumpsters, Vidya made it very clear to us a few months ago, like her hands have been tied every time she has to write a comment on a dumpster enclosure because the ordinance says it's got to be Masonry. And we think there's some instances where that is not a good idea and Vidya agree with that. So we asked Attorney Craft, you just draft something that lets the planning commission have the right to alter, to select alternative, um, materials when appropriate. And that will give, give Vidya some latitude when she's reviewing these plans. So it'd be a simple.
I can actually, Nick, I can actually provide you with sample pictures of dumpster enclosure built with other materials that looks just as attractive and durable, if not better than Masonry enclosures. In fact, two of my other clients are also currently revising their dumpster enclosure ordinances to allow for that. Having completely Masonry enclosure with wooden gates is a standard that came up at least 20 plus years ago. It's just never been revisited. So I'm happy to provide, you know, Attorney Craft with some pictures so it can be included in the ordinance and the planning commission can see the options that are out there. There are really good options out there right now.
So we'd ask to set a public hearing for your April meeting on this and we could take the next step and we'll get the information from Vidya to Jeff.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, who gave support there?
Uh, Mr. Gasson.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Next item, six C, special project ordinance.
So, um, we had a very robust meeting. I thought that was the best meeting we've had since I've been here with the planning commission and city council where Vidya and John Jackson explained the concept of a master plan, what that means, how we go through that. And then we got into some details and we were talking about, there was one point in the beginning of the master plan process that Vidya and John McKenna didn't have say in it because it was Beckett and Raider that was writing the ordinance, we were getting a push to get rid of special projects, right? And the, the person that was pushing that no longer was with us on city council to push that. So it gave us some time to regroup, think about it, and to have staff, including McKenna, who's looked, worked with us on this project forever, this concept, um, explain how important they are, where they're fair to the developer and they're fair to the city. We're not forcing anybody to do anything, but it helps the planning commission have an opportunity in a, an extremely built out town to do, it's like, um, plan unit developments. We can massage some of the sites and not break all the zoning ordinance requirements, right? So we, so I, the one that was bothering me the most is, and it's no secret, the elevator had a, I, I loved how Vidya explained, so it's really was a Scribner's error, we believe. In the past two master plans that said, why would we put a peak up, a special project line and not call potential intensity change areas through a property? It should have followed the property and we didn't catch it on either one of them. Um, so at the city council meetings, John Jackson made a really good argument about, hey, many, many communities and Patrick's dealt with this his whole career, the whole city can be a special project area and let the planning commission do whatever they want with city council's approval. That was a big step for me personally. I, I really think that's a little scary. So I wasn't looking for that as economic development guy. I was looking for, I think our special project areas are pretty solid. I don't think there's anything we really missed. What we should have the ability to do is move a, a, move a contiguous property that's part of the same parcel, move that special project line, like the elevator to correct that, right? And then, so Jeff and Vidya went through a bunch of iterations. I, I did my best to not make it sprinkles so that we can do the whole city, but kind of tighten it up a little bit more. And Jeff, maybe if you guys want to go over that. So I, we're comfortable with this, that will accomplish the goal of not just saying, make a new special project area without the input from the public. Because the public was worried about solar onyx. Are you guys going to make that a special project so you can do whatever you want? We're not suggesting that because that would be a brand new special projects. We're not necessarily doing. If the planning commission and city council feels like we want to do what John afforded and Patrick supported, that other communities say the whole city's basically a special project, we could write it that way, but this is not that.
So if I can supplement that, so there's two ways to accomplish the, the goal. One is to go through the changing of the map, which, you know, sort of change the boundary to wherever the city wants it to go. And that would change, it would take a, a, a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings, public hearings, because you're now changing the, the actual zoning map. Rather, um, since it was deemed to be not that big of an issue, just if we could absorb some of the other properties adjacent to the line is, in fact, I think it was John Jackson said, we'll just change the ordinance to say, and other non-residential properties that are adjacent to it. You know, instead of changing the map, you change the, the, the reference point, which is anything in the district or adjacent to the district. So, um, that's the way that it's being presented. So in, so now it reads, uh, a special project means any development located in the special over, uh, special project overlay district, which is how it is now. Now we've added language, or other non-residential or multiple family zoned residential property adjacent to the special project overlay district. And this is what becomes key is it's always, always subject to city council approval, right? So even in the, in the worst case scenario, if we made the whole city a special project, it still has to go through you and it still has to get approved by city council. So the scariness that, that Nick was expressing is while true, it's, it is tempered by, it has, it's still discretionary. But what this does is it still, it still points out, city council, planning commission still have to do their special project reviews and approvals, but this just allows for the, um, incorporating of a little bit more around the edges, the adjacent to it. In fact, it would pick up the, the Water Street project, um, instead of, you know, that would pick up the Scribner's error, if you will. So it's really not a huge change to the ordinance. It, it merely says adds non-residential or multiple family zoned, uh, that are adjacent to the existing green line, I think is, is the color. So, um, that's, it's really, we've had a lot of discussion on it, but that seems to be the, the path of least resistance, um, to getting it. Because I know, in fact, in that, in that case, I know there's people that are waiting to see, what are you going to do with that boundary? Because like, for instance, the, uh, uh, the elevator property, parts in, parts out. So, you know, they, they're kind of at a, a standstill on that.
And, and I would say that, and I'm not going to say it's some political cover, but to be fair to the residents, I, we've got the administration building and we've got solar onyx and there's a couple others that I could see people saying, oh, you just took away the rules and do whatever you want. I don't think that's fair to put this commission nor the city council willy nilly like that because I can guarantee the developers will just come in and stretch the rules as far as they can. So this is a conservative approach to, again, adjacent properties to fix a few of the little problems without opening Pandora's box. If the people really want to develop the administration building or solar onyx differently, zone it properly. Go to the master plan and we'll get the underlying zoning right. I still believe as a pure planner, underlying zoning is the most powerful tool you can have. If you agree with what you want on those areas and you amend it when needed, every five years you look at it again, say times have changed. Now we do want to change that, but then the public has input in that. It's not us jamming it down their throat, which doesn't seem right to me. As the economic development guy, I'm like, hey, let me sell every piece to everything. No, no, as a planner person, I like order and appropriateness and the underlying zoning category, uh, theory is still the most sound. Um, I think it's defensible personally. And Vidya, I don't know how you feel, but.
Commissioner, uh, King has a comment.
Uh, just a question with this adjacent concept, it, does it take a property like the elevator where it's split and it puts it together? Or is it any property that's adjacent to the, the, the line, but doesn't include something inside the line? So if it's something outside, every property now on, just along the border of that line becomes eligible on its own?
Yeah. So in theory, there is no other, there's a street on one side, so it's not adjacent. But in theory, it could be a property adjacent to it, like Sunrise technically is adjacent to it, was already developed as a special project. But again, like Attorney Craft said, it still comes to this body and city council make that determination. It's not a gimme. Just because you're adjacent, you don't get it. You still have to go through the, the premise of why are you asking for a special project? That, so that's total control of this body still.
But it could include a brand new property that's not otherwise in the district.
Okay. I just, I wasn't sure if it was, okay, you have something in there, plus anything adjacent to it if you're adding it together, right? Like, okay.
That was just one example.
As a standalone adjacent.
It could be a standalone that otherwise wasn't in the, in the district, now could be in the district.
And we would probably argue rezonate, you know? Go ahead Vidya. Go ahead Vidya.
Just to clarify for the planning commission also, this is, um, it sounds scary, like Nick said, that are we going to open up everything in the city for special projects? In Rochester, we call it special projects, but basically this tool is available in every single other municipality. It is just called a PUD, a planned unit development. And planned unit developments in most municipalities can be pretty much applied to any parcel within the boundary lines of that municipality. They just have a few underlying requirements. For instance, in some municipalities, uh, that are larger, say a township, a PUD needs to have a minimum land area of 40 acres. Or in the more rural ones, it needs to have access to a sewer line. So there are qualifying factors, but a PUD is no different than a special project. It can be applied to any parcel within a municipality. In our case, in the city of Rochester, we just call it special projects. While it seems like we are stretching the boundaries a little bit, a planning commission and the city council will still have full control to deny any such request. If they feel, no, this is just stretching it too much, we do not want to see a special project here. You would be absolutely within your rights in the provisions that are currently in our ordinance to say no to it.
And trying to fix a couple of small problems that we have right now, I'm afraid if we throw the big picture out to the community, this is going to railroad this whole process and then we're stuck with not fixing the things that we're really facing right now. So we could come back to that at another date if we're comfortable with that, but this fixes the issue of the Scribner's error, certainly in one property, um, for sure.
So our goal here tonight is to make a motion to put this on the agenda for the April 6th meeting.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion for that?
I think we do. So moved.
Do we have a supporter?
Support.
Excellent. Roll call please.
Uh, Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Okay. Onto the miscellaneous items section.
Right. Just to keep on the roll here, so situation under nobody's control. First time it's happened. So last Friday, in came Tom Bosley. Tom Bosley, you remember him? He built with Joe Kay Cumberland Association. He was the builder. Tom's had a passion for being a distiller, distiller of spirits for years. He tried to buy the old, um, where Rochester Play is. He tried to work that out with the Storm Capital guys to put a distillery in there. Him and his wife been trying to do this for 10 years, probably since I've known him. So finally, he went to Lake Orion, got his distillery, he's doing a great job up there. They live in Rochester, he wants something here. So he went to the state of Michigan and he got a, a tasting room license that's conditioned on getting a, a physical space. So they have the, you know where Pamela's, Antiques by Pamela's is, it's on Main Street between third and four, on between, yeah, third and fourth. Pamela was a little jeweler that she retired, but kept her business and moved it to the back of Soul Sisters because she just needed a little space. She does more private consulting in antique jewelry. So that freed up the space of Pamela. So they put up her lease sign on. Tom saw it immediately, went and said, all right, this is all I want to do. I don't want to touch the facade. I don't want to change anything. I just want to buy four parking spaces so I can change the use from retail to a distillery, which would be a restaurant with alcohol. So it makes it a deficiency of four parking spaces because he's grandfathered in for the retail and it's, it can seat 44 to 45 people. Um, and we want that to go to a, to ask, he needs to do a parking in lieu of special exception. If we did our normal process, we'd have to wait till April for him to get to May. He, all he has to do is gut the inside and open this thing in 45 days. So I'm asking tonight if we could set a public hearing for April, not for a facade change, nothing other than asking for a pay in lieu of four parking spaces for 329 South Main. Doesn't even need to report, doesn't need anything, but it's a process that we have to go through. I wish we could just, I, I would like support down the line at any time these come in and they're starting to come in more now because we reduced the parking fee to $1,000. So people are saying, I'll move in the building, I'm gutting the inside, Randy will handle me building, I'm not touching the outside. We've had two or three, Zoot is another one that's coming in. So it would speed it up if I could, we could just administratively put it on your agenda for a public hearing and not ask to put it a month later, if that makes sense to you. So I would ask tonight that we would set it for April, um, in this case.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, that is all I have. And again, we'll have this all straightened out from now on and it's, I probably said that a few times lately, but we're trying to get this right. It's, and things are happening fast and furious and it's exciting for us with the town, but we're, we're trying to be fair to both sides because we can't jam Vidya all the time and she needs time to do these properly. And we, we support her thought process, how she goes through them without a doubt. We just ran into some weird ones, so.
Do any of the commissioners have any miscellaneous items to bring up?
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman, uh, the idea of a reverse variance, whatever you want to call it, i- is it possible for administration to work with planning to, to look at that issue? I mean, it's a pretty good issue of someone has a, a legitimate gripe about our ordinance, but how can they deal with it other than live with it? And I know we wrestled with that on this lighting thing, but there must be another way, just like there is, hey, I want to do something I can't. How do we get something undone that's hurting us?
Yeah, and, and what made, I was following that because what makes sense is when in the zoning board, as you know, it's based on hardship or a special, um, a special circumstance, right? And there aren't too many homes, like in this case, where there is a garage in somebody's front yard. I know there's a couple more on our side of town, but very rare. So, and if it's in the zoning ordinance, Vidya's told me this before, once you have something in the zoning ordinance, it can go to the zoning board of appeals for a, an administrative interpretation, if you will. And that's under the powers of the zoning board. So I think that, I think you could write it somehow to do what you're asking. And it makes sense to me because it's a circumstance that's unique. Why shouldn't they have the right to go to a board and ask and give the circumstances to say, I don't, I can't do that or I don't want to do that? And let them base it based on findings of fact that would stand up in court. That's how we write ZBA cases. We, I, if I need to, I get Jeff involved or Vidya involved and we make sure that everything we do stands up in court because that's, after the zoning board, it goes to circuit court and that puts the city at risk for dollars. So we take that very serious at the ZBA. We don't mess around there at all. It's, you gotta have a really good reason. I can't tell you how many people that never get there because I'm like, I, I'm writing the case and you don't have hardship, sorry. Well, my neighbor, it doesn't matter, that's, that doesn't matter what your neighbor has. So I think we could find a way to, to work on something like that. It's an interesting concept.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So on that note, on that note, if any of the planning commission members are interested, next Tuesday is the Michigan Association of Planning's Advanced ZBA, Beyond the Fundamentals. It's case studies of, uh, legal case studies for the zoning board of appeals. I am a MAP certified instructor for the zoning board of appeals. I train municipal clients all over the state.[1685.53] So I'm conducting a seminar next Tuesday under MAP for the advanced, it's beyond the basics of the zoning board of appeals. So if any members are interested into the planning commission or the ZBA, please feel free to sign up for that. It should be an interesting session.
Yeah, and we would pay for that too. We, we send it out to the ZBA members because that's education that you all can use. It's certainly the ZBA soul. Absolutely, take her up on it if you can. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other public comment for this evening? Uh any upcoming agenda items to discuss?
Um I think we said them all tonight and um you will, let's see. Um you will see Re Walt's soon. We got Vidya the initial drawings for the elevator site, so when she's ready, that will come forward. Technically, they can't ask for a special project until this wording goes into effect if we change, allow the boundary to be changed. They're stuck with a, they could ask for a special project for two thirds of the property, but not the other third. And we can't rezonate properly because they, because of the environmental problems, they have to put the buildings on the outside, which won't meet any of the RM one districts. They're only asking for thirty units and three stories, which would meet RM one, but it won't meet the setbacks. How do you go to the ZBA and say, I'm not going to have my setbacks? What's the hardship? So a PICA works for that site. So you'll see that ones maybe in April. Um and then um.
Any update on solar onics?
So yes, so we, Patrick and I met with them right after that meeting, frustrated group actually, but thought they were treated very fairly. Um they came back and and took RT seriously. And they looked at the, the zoning ordinance requirements for RT and drew a site plan for that. So if you want, one second, this is kind of interesting. So if the residents got what they wanted, they would get it to be RT under the master plan. And they said, fine, RT doesn't have a density calculation. RT was written to be for lots in downtown um that were, um, there's one on Third Street, a hundred feet wide. And there's a couple that are sixty-six feet wide. So there's a few spots on the side streets, on the west side only, that are zone RT. That's where the duplexes are. It was made and written for that. So you'd need simply thirty-two hundred square feet of land area and you can put two family units on it, one or two. Wasn't set up to be in a tired district. How the master plan called for RT on a three and a half acre parcel, I have no idea. Because all they have to do is beat five foot setback on one side, twenty-five in the front, thirty-five in the rear, ten on the other side. And then put as many units as they can jam in there, as long as they have enough parking. It would be a cluster. So we sat out the development and showed it to us. I can get a hundred units here, but they're all going to be these little duplexes all over the place and cover the whole land and it doesn't even have density required. So it, it could backfire on us. So they, we said, we're not, it's not zoned RT. RT is just the master plan, so we would correct that here before we allow a horrible development on that site. You don't have any right just because the master plan says RT, right? So we had to rethink that, maybe RM one and under RM one, now you're back to three stories, less density, et cetera. So we met with them and I don't know if it's telling you enough. They said, do you have any other sites we can take this building on and put it? Because we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars already. So I gave them Osherry Site at Elizabeth. I gave them the overlooked site up by the um senior center. I gave them Suave Site. I gave them the names, contacts, get a hold of these people. You could literally take that building and be underbuilt on all three of those sites if you could get them somehow. Go down, Patrick, we talked to Joey, go down under the cement plant, talk to La Chirco, say, I'll buy your property and stick it down there. People have said that they like it elsewhere. They don't mind the building, they just don't like it on Ludlow. So I gave them four other places that they could go to, have not heard back since. So we anticipate we'll hear something at some point. But I, I think they, they, they didn't want to be that disruptive, I think, and they underst- yeah. So that's where we're at with that. I don't know when it's going to come back, if it's going to ever come back.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Great. Anything else? Excellent.
So much.
Chairman for the evening.